The Tuesday, May 7th, Mentor Board of Education meeting is called to order. Please call the roll.
Ms. Appalo.
Here.
Ms. Jessley. Ms. Marches.
Present.
Ms. Payne.
Here.
Ms. Cook.
Here. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Right here. I'd like to call the Mentor City Council Public Work Session with the Mentor Public Schools to order, May 7th, 2024. And that would be a good time to do it.
No?
Oh, we gotta call the roll. We're not used to this.
We aren't.
All right, Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Kersner.
Here.
Mr. Freger.
Here.
Mr. Mark.
Here.
Mr. Blake.
Here.
Mr. Donovan.
Here.
Mrs. Darling.
Here.
Mr. Freeman.
He is excused. Okay, now we can do the pledge to the flag.
Let's allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, one God, and indivisible, with the verity of justice, law,
Okay, um, Maggie, you want to go first? Tell us, everybody, how we got here?
Sure, thank you. Well, um, thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight. I think that everyone here at the table is invested in Mentor. And, you know, we're here tonight because we have a commitment to the city of Mentor, and we are each elected with our own perspectives, and we have our own, um, needs that we need to fulfill as elected officials. But ultimately, we want what's best for Mentor. And we know that when we work in collaboration, we're gonna have the strongest, the strongest city that we can have. So I'm really excited for us to open the dialogue today. I know that we have been talking about this meeting for a very long time. When Mrs. Payne and I first got on, we were talking about meeting with the city. And I know, Mr. Donovan, you and I have been talking about this for a very long time. And, um, you, Mr. Blake, you reached out recently, I'd say, January? Yeah, January, to get the ball rolling here. So I'm glad we're all sitting here today, and we're talking about what we can do, what we already do, because we do have a lot of nice things going on, a lot of collaborative efforts. But what can we do best for the city? What can we do better, really on both sides, and keep that dialogue alive? So I'm happy to have that discussion tonight.
Thank you, Maggie. Thank you for everybody hosting us here. So thinking back on what Maggie said, this is a meeting that's been a long time in coming. I think it was seven years ago, the last time we did this, and I think Ginny was, I was trying to figure out where we had it. I think it might have been back there. I think this building had just opened. But it is true, when we work together in conjunction with each other, especially on issues that one side or the other finds to be a little bit difficult, things like economic development, that collaboration and connection, and when we talk to each other, things get worked out. And just like Maggie said, we share the same constituents. And when we work together and we find solutions, it's a city that becomes a better place. So, you know, I want to thank everybody for having us again. And so with that, I think I'm going to throw the ball over to Mr. Heath.
Awesome. Thank you, guys, for being here. I really appreciate the ability to have a conversation around some common topics here to kind of get us started today. I just have a couple of bullet points that I'll kind of toss out to the entire group and give you guys a couple of updates from the school district perspective, and then any of our board members can chime in with any of their thoughts with some of these things as well. Just kind of starting off with the workforce development piece to the puzzle, this is something that, obviously, we've been really trying to hone in on here a lot in the first year and a half, two years of my superintendency here in Mentor. We've always had some great CTE programs, but we want to kind of take those things to the next level. I think one of the best examples is our collaborative work with the city, in particular with the fire department and with our EMT Academy. It's been a great partnership all the way through. Really looking forward to expanding on some of that as well. The one update I'll throw out to the group is, we actually do have, tomorrow evening, from 5:30 to 7:00, they're having an open house over at the fire station on Reynolds Road. They're gonna be doing some demonstrations over there as well, so everybody is invited to that. Should be a great event, just to kind of showcase the work that Jerry Craddock and our students have been doing in that EMT Academy. One other additional piece that we've been kind of playing around with, and it was kind of fun to hear Mr. Philippiak talk a little bit about the, kind of the junior police academy idea with, you know, middle school students here during his State of the City address back in February. And we've been talking a lot on our end about what a future junior police academy might look like from an academic standpoint as well. I was able to go visit the law enforcement academy over in Euclid here this morning with Dr. Glavin, and Mr. Crowe is there as well. And we kind of had a little side conversation after we saw what their program was and started talking, really in earnest, about what this potentially could look like here in Mentor. They do have a great program over there. We've got some of our kids in that program. But, you know, if we were to kind of build off that EMT model and that partnership here in the city, I think that's something that we would really look forward to trying to expand and create here together here in the future. The one interesting thing that kind of came out of that visit today is their instructor was talking about how some of their kids are now getting some drone certifications, and that's actually something that we are just building here for next school year. We've got an aviation academy now that is going to be kind of tied into the drone pilots' license program, so our kids will be going through that program to be able to get that. Well, they were talking about that being one of those certifications in their law enforcement academy, because they're looking at some of those, you know, criminal investigations and policing efforts, and there's a need for that type of certification area as well. So we've already got that piece kind of built into it, and we're trying to expand on that even into a private pilot's license. We're working with Vector Aviation here this summer, and they're actually gonna be doing some ground school work here in Paradigm. So trying to tie all of those things together for, you know, some potential future partnerships, I think will be a great step for us as a school district and as a city as well. Didn't know if there were any connecting points that anybody else around the table wanted to make with any of those things? The one final thing I'll mention with workforce development, then, is we just want to make sure we continue to partner with the city when it comes to our business and industry leaders here, and making those connections so that we can create those career pathways as we continue to develop those that are actually gonna be meaningful and meet the needs of our future workforce here. So, again, I know economic development is kind of the heartbeat of the city right now, and whatever we can do from a school district perspective, to try and make sure we build those skills out of the students here, to be able to fill those jobs for some of those businesses that are coming, I think is gonna be a huge step for us. So we're committed to continue that as well. Next one on the docket is talking about the SRO expansion plans. Obviously, that was something that we may have mentioned of here in our State of the Schools address, something that I know Mr. Philippiak has talked a lot about as well. We've had a great partnership with Chief Gunch as we've gone through this process here this year. I know it's a commitment of everybody on our board to try and get police officers in each of our buildings. Been a challenge at times, we know, because of just the lack of human beings in those roles right now, much like our bus driver shortage. But, you know, we want to continue to try and build on that expansion plan. One of the things that we do appreciate, and we were able to create that plan this year, get some of those four-hour shifts pushed into all of our elementary schools. You know, we're getting some of those filled, some of them not, but, again, one of the things that we appreciated as well was that we were able to shift some of those unfilled slots over to Lake County Sheriff's Department, and I know we've had a couple of sheriffs that have stepped into a couple of those time slots for us here as well. Tomorrow, we are meeting with our school safety committee. We'll be over at the municipal building at 10 o'clock?
10.
10 o'clock? And, Andy, just so you know, it is at the municipal building. I forgot to mention it.
Thanks.
So we are gonna be over there tomorrow, kind of take a look at some of the potential future contract pieces to this, too. I know we've had several conversations around the retired officers, and, you know, you've got quite a few that are getting to the end where they have to do something. And we've kind of worked through that Lake County Sheriff's contract with Riverside and tried to take a look at that and figure out how we might model that contract here in Mentor. We've had legal counsel taking a look at some things as well, and we're hoping to get, you know, kind of the balance, what are the risks, what are the contract pieces that we can put in place to potentially try and build something here that will allow us to use some of those newly retired officers when they get to that point in their careers to be able to step in and maybe fill those roles for us. So that'll be one of the talking points tomorrow. I'm hoping to get some contract pieces after our morning meetings, but if not, we'll have those relatively soon. The other thing, and this is something that we've appreciated, the partnership with Chief Gunch and Chief Searls in particular, when we look at our school safety pieces, you know, just how we operate those school safety features from a physical standpoint, cameras, you know, our entrance ways, doors, windows, whatever it may be, they always give us really good insights into how maybe we can harden the shell of our buildings to make sure that we are trying to be as preventative as possible when it comes to any type of issue that we might have from a safety standpoint in our buildings. One of the things tomorrow, we hope to kind of bounce off the entire group, we'll be looking at some of the grant opportunities that are available out there right now, seeing if there are some things in those grants that we might be able to tap into, get those things written here. I believe we've got some deadlines coming up here in June for most of those grants, so that we can get more insights and pick the experts' brains a little bit more to make sure that we're really trying to fulfill what we have with those grant opportunities. Again, turn it over to our groups here, if there are any points that you would like to make.
I'd just like to thank them for their involvement. Mentor Fire and Police, you're critical to us with our safety drills. You know, you know our buildings, you give us great advice, what we need to do, how we need to train, what we need to improve, and I really appreciate that, just knowing that, you know, your response time is excellent, you know, your staff is top-notch, and we rely really very heavily on that.
Mr. Blake?
Not sure which chair to address here. Well, thank you. I just want to chime in on what Superintendent Heath said. First of all, I think it's important for both the school board and our council to continue to appreciate, which I know all of you do, the fact that the school and city administrations work very well together. We have for many years, of course, with Superintendent Heath and with past superintendents, one of our top agenda, I would say, our top item for discussion and action has always been school safety, because it's a big part of community safety overall. And I think, and I know that Chief Gunch and Chief Searls would echo this as well, that we've made a lot of great strides in that respect. The first two items on these topics for discussion really are tied together, and I appreciate early in the year being asked to be one among a large swath of our community in participating in the Business Advisory Committee discussions. And one of those topics that came up was what you had talked about, about setting up, about the success of the EMT Academy, and trying to take that and model that towards something in law enforcement, because the challenge is with trying to find new candidates, good candidates, to fill police roles. And our idea is, if we can get kids excited about it in the middle school and high school level, to be thinking about that as a career. It's a little bit more difficult with police, because you have to be 21 to be appointed as peace officer in Ohio. So that we're also want to continue to work with the school and some of our higher education institutions to see if we can find ways to bridge interest at the secondary school level with that and the college level, and to look for those opportunities for transition. So I think getting them interested early is a big part of it. Touching on the SRO expansion plans, again, I think we've made a lot of strides in helping to get some of our officers, as well as, I know, working with officers in the sheriff's department. And there are other districts that use this type of a model that we're currently embracing, which is usually retired or off-duty officers to fill some of these spots. I can tell you that we've had discussions about a long-term hope, and I really labeled this as a long-term plan, to find a, to reach a day where we're getting officers on a full-time basis in all of the schools. I think that's in our future. I think it's in the future of all school districts. And because our district and our city together have been leaders in so many other things in the past, you know, it's an aspiration of mine, and I know of others here at the table, to maybe look for that as a future goal. Obviously, funding is a big part of that, being able to find enough officers and to be trained them appropriately. All of these are challenges that I think we can meet in the long run, and I think that, frankly, I think this community would probably embrace in the long run. But I just wanted to really mention the fact that this partnership we've had has been very fruitful across the board, and, you know, we appreciate all the hard work that's been done, and I do think that our schools are safer than they've ever been.
I thought it was such an innovative idea to have a police camp this June, I believe, for middle schoolers to kind of be introduced to some of the processes of investigation, and I thought, what a great idea to kind of set the stage for potentially an academy that we might be able to offer, so kudos to you.
No, thank you. Yeah, and it was really a great response to it. We put it out there, and I think it was on a Thursday or a Friday we put it out, and by Monday, we were filled with how many we wanted. And it's our first time, so we're kind of taking it a little bit slow, but I hope to expand that as it goes on. And like Mr. Philippiak said, bridging that gap between high school and that 21-years-old is essential to keep that going and to get that interest into law enforcement and keep it going during that time, till we can bring them onto the force at that time, so.
And you could see from the officers who visited our elementary schools, and were talking about police investigations and kind of what that meant, and you could just see how engaged the kids were, enjoying that interaction, and it piqued their interest clearly, so I thought it was such a positive.
Thank you.
If I could add one more thing to that, too. One of the things that I think we recognize as well is that homegrown candidates in the police and the fire, or any of the jobs that we have, and I'm sure that's true for teachers and administrators here, who have a commitment to their community, to their district, they make the best employees and officers and firefighters, because they have an inherent interest in preserving and improving their community.
Mr. Blake? Mr. Heath, I guess, a little bit more on your, on the overtime and the funding, I guess there is some funding available, correct? And we're having a hard time getting policemen to work overtime. It's just a shortage, or is it the age, or is it, is it, it's just, they don't want the overtime, they don't want the overtime, or they don't want, it's?
Yeah, because we worked with Mr. Wade to identify the funding sources here within our general fund, and we've got that budgeted now, so the funds are there for it. We're just trying to get everybody, just trying to get everybody to bite on those and to fill those. And we've had the conversations, too. I know Chief Gunch has said this over and over again, a lot of the younger guys coming in right now are prioritizing time over money. You know, it's just kind of that mindset shift in the workforce right now. So I think that's one of the things that we have to figure out, okay, what's the solution to this, then? You know, we've got the funding piece available, just got to make sure, you know, like we were talking about here, you know, can we start to grow our own so that we get those qualified people coming in? You know, we talk about police and fire, talk about teachers on our end. We even joked around about trying to start a CDL license program to get bus drivers here in the district. But we run into the same situation, and that gap between 18 and 21, 22, when they're physically allowed to drive a bus, how do we get them to stay that course and then come back to us to drive those buses is an important thing, then, too. So we got to figure out how to bridge that gap, very similar to what Chief Gunch is mentioning with the police force.
Thank you.
Mr. Heath, we were, are we still budgeting? Is it two, ideally, for two full-time police officers per year?
Yes, so we, so we had two for this year, and we have two more budgeted for next year, so a total of four there, in addition to what we already currently have. So we've got that funding source available still. Is that correct? Mr. Wade? Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, I believe, for the third year out, then, it would be two additional ones until we get that full complement in all of our buildings. And again, however we piecemeal that together, you know, anything is better than nothing. Before we jump into the next, any other comments about any of those topics before we jump? Might skip down on our paper to number four, then, because I think it kind of ties into our conversation a little bit more as well. I'm just kind of looking at business and industry needs. One of the things that we're currently going through right now is our strategic planning process here in the district. We started that back in April, on the 18th and 19th, with a couple of discovery days here in the district, where we had the outside facilitators come in that are working through this strategic planning process with us. And they engaged with probably about 200 different individuals. We did some classroom visits, we did some student focus groups, we did meetings, we had our PTA presidents in, we had our, some building, no, some Business Advisory Council members in, we had a community forum one evening as well, just to try and engage and start to kind of get a sense for what Mentor Schools is all about. We followed that up here last week with our first guiding coalition meeting. That was last Thursday, and we started the process of drafting the first part of this strategic planning process, which we're calling a Portrait of a Learner. Mr. Donovan is on our guiding coalition as well, so it's great to have that partnership here with this process. We're gonna be meeting again next Wednesday, where we're gonna be jumping into, hopefully, a little bit more of that Portrait of a Graduate, or Portrait of a Learner, excuse me, and then getting into the goals and action steps of our strategic plan itself. And then that final piece is gonna be a scorecard that we're gonna be using to really measure the outcomes that we're hoping to get out of this strategic plan in the future. And one of the things that I'm hoping to get out of this, as we continue to work on those career pathway models, and I know Mr. Philippiak said this just a little bit ago as well, how do we start to thread that through, not just our high school programming, but what's it look like in middle school, what's it look like in elementary school, what's it look like in our preschool programs? To start to get that career exposure, some career exploration, and then the career experiences for our students all the way through, that'll generate some of those interests. Oftentimes, a lot of our elementary students, you know, they know what mom and dad might do, maybe, they know what a teacher does, they know a police officer and a fireman, but beyond that, do they really know some of the other pieces that are out there in our community? And what our hope is, is to be able to kind of bring that thread all the way through so that we start to generate those interests in what we currently have here, right here in Mentor, to be able to build that workforce that we're gonna need. When it all is said and done, that's what a school district is all about. We're trying to prepare these kids to be good citizens here in Mentor, and what does that look like? And how do we build that workforce in the needs that you guys are bringing to the district? I know last week, you guys were in Europe, hopefully bringing some more business to the city of Mentor. You know, how can we start to partner with them to create the skills and the aptitudes and the dispositions that those students need to be able to step into those jobs that those businesses are gonna be creating here in Mentor? So I do want to thank everybody that's been involved in that process. I know there are several people sitting in the room that have been part of our discovery days and our guiding coalition. We're gonna continue to engage with our business partners and our city government as we go through this strategic plan. Got a couple more days here in May, a couple more days in June, and we hope to present our strategic plan to the board here at our July meeting. So we'll have that wrapped up and ready to go here for the beginning of next school year. So again, just wanted to thank this group for their participation in that and hopefully continue to engage with you guys moving forward with that, too. Any other comments?
I'll mention, Mr. Blake. Rose and I and Ginny are on the Coalition Committee, and it was, if you guys could attest, it was a pretty amazing day, wasn't it? We spent eight hours together going over all kind of, any kind of subject you wanted to come up with, and we separated into separate groups. There were 30-something other people was in this room, and it was quite amazing. We did a lot of projects, you know, the posters on the walls with people's beliefs and what should be, what should be happening in the schools, in the community, and the school, basically, the school board and the city as partners, because if the schools and the fire and the police are bad, I always say it, the city's bad. So it was quite amazing. We spent a lot of time together, and these posters got hung on the wall, and there were people with totally completely different beliefs and other things. But in the end, it came down to four or five basic things, that we love children and we care about our kids and our community. And it was really amazing. We're meeting again the 15th, and I'm really looking forward to it. Mr. Heath brought in, what was her name?
So the company's called the Learner Centered Collaborative. We're part of something called the League of Innovative Schools. It's kind of a national organization for school districts that have an innovative approach to education. And this was a kind of a spin-off group from that League of Innovative Schools. We had, we've engaged with three different facilitators so far, one's from Atlanta, Georgia, one's from Denver, Colorado, and the other one is actually from Middletown, Ohio. So it's nice to have a little Midwest flavor to it as well. But again, the organization is out of San Diego, and to be able to have that national perspective, I think, coming in to really give us some insights into not only what our strengths are that they're identifying, but what are some of those challenge points? Where are some of those common threads that we can have as a community and as a school district to make sure that we really generate something that's gonna be beneficial to our students?
There was, one more thing, it was incredibly organized. The woman from Georgia was incredible. It was fantastic, and I'm looking forward to the next, to the next meeting.
Thank you.
I thought it was exceptional, and even though we had so many folks from all different walks of life, some school people, our facilitators, and wonderful community partners, it was very exciting to see exactly what you said, Matt, which is we found so many commonalities. And the groups were very fluid throughout the day, so that you could mix and match, and you had a chance to have smaller group clusters with almost everybody over the course of those hours that we shared. So I had a wonderful time and really appreciated the generosity of our community to pitch in and join, be a part of it.
I'm just gonna throw in that the woman mentioned she's been to a lot of these, and this was the most enthusiastic one she's ever been to, and that's a compliment to everybody in the city, basically. Thanks for that.
Final bullet point, then, just from a partnership standpoint. About a year ago, we sat down with City of Manner, United Way of Lake County, the Greater Cleveland Food Bank, and Heinans, and started the first ever food market here in Manner. And that, that collaboration has just been phenomenal. Last month, we actually surpassed 100,000 pounds of fresh produce that's been distributed to the families across our community. I think coming out of the pandemic, the economically disadvantaged population within, within our school district has risen. I believe we're right in that 30% to 35% range now. And, and that's something that, you know, we're very cognizant of. And in order to make sure that we're serving the needs of our students in every way possible, you know, food scarcity is one of those things that often gets overlooked. And I think we knew there was a need. I don't think we realized how deep that need really was. Our food bank starts at 11:00 a.m. the last Thursday of each month. And probably 8:45 to 9 o'clock range, there's already a lineup of cars streaming down from the stadium to the Fine Arts Center. We've, we've been able to hand out a lot of food. And that partnership that we have with you guys on that is, is just phenomenal. It's something that we're going to continue on with. Our next one is actually on May 23rd, because May 30th is actually the last day of school. We didn't want to do it on the last day of school. So, it's May 23rd this month. But again, all of the volunteer hours that, that you guys have given us, the United Way has given us, and, and really Dr. Glavin kind of leading the charge with some of that as well, you know, getting our Cardinal Works kids out there and some of our other students from the high school to, to help out with this process. It's just been, it's been a real joy for me because you can see the looks on those families' faces as they come through and they're able to get some of the fresh produce. It's, it's been very rewarding and just something that, you know, we couldn't do without the city. So, wanted to thank you guys for that. It's been a great partnership.
Mr. Heath?
Yes, sir.
Can I interrupt you for a second? I'm, I'm sitting here kind of amazed that I think what I'm hearing is 30% to 35% of your school population is experiencing food insecurity. It's a lot higher than what I thought it would be in this community.
Yeah. It's, it's increased a lot in the last few years here, too.
And these are primarily families of students coming through this line?
Yeah, I, we get, we get families from, from all walks of life here in Manner. The only thing that we ask when they come through is how many students are in the household and how many seniors, senior citizens are in the household so that we can kind of keep track of those. And we've, we've got some of those numbers. I can share those out with the group here as well. But yeah, it's amazing to, to see the individuals coming through.
That's a lot higher than what I thought it would be, number wise. Thank you.
And Mr. Heath, to be clear, that they don't need to be students. They don't need to have students in our district. Any, anyone in the community-
Anyone in the community is welcome.
Mr. Heath, do you know, because I remember when I got on the board and I saw the homelessness that, for our students, I was shocked at that percentage as well. Do you know that offhand?
I don't know that number off the top of my head right now. That's something that we can look into, too. I can share some of those, that, those data points with everybody.
I remember being very surprised at that, too.
Yeah.
Craig, United Way has all that information. It's all broken down for city, everything top to bottom. So, that'd be a good place to-
I think they call it their, is it the ALIS data?
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah. And we keep tabs, obviously. We, here in the school district, we, we have the free and reduced lunch program. So, that makes up our economically disadvantaged population that, that we use those numbers for. And then the other piece is in school districts, through the McKinney-Vento Act, we, we keep track of all the students that are identified as homeless because there are different transportation needs that they have. There are different enrollment needs that they have. So, we have to take care of those things right off the bat for those families and get them in school as quickly as possible. So, we, we have to keep track of those numbers almost on a daily basis, too.
Good.
Those are all the topics I have, Ms. Cook.
Are there any topics that, that you do at all?
I have a question. How are the seniors notified of this program?
Senior citizens.
I can understand through the school, but how do the seniors find out about this?
We send those things out through our social media posts as well. And those go out to the entire community. It's not just our, our school families that are part of that. So, we do try to publicize that as much as we can. Also, going through the United Way, they have their own communications department that actually helps send that out to the community here in Lake County, too.
Thank you.
That's a good question. I believe I've seen that on the Manner Channel, too. Was that advertised on the Manner Channel?
It's a good question.
I think so.
I know the News Herald also has featured it a couple of times.
Yeah, we've had a couple of articles in the News Herald, too.
I wonder if we have a connection with the Council on Aging, too, because I know that they serve a lot of people in Manner. I wonder if that would be a good-
Mm-hmm.
That's a great idea.
All right, just one thing. I guess a lot of the elderly don't have social media.
Right.
I guess that's why Janet-
Right.
-was saying, hey, what's, what are the other News Herald? I mean, I don't know.
They're finding out somehow because they're showing up. We've run out of food every time. And we're normally out of food by like 11:30. It's supposed to start at 11:00. Like I said, they line up 8:45, 9 o'clock. And, you know, as soon as we're ready to roll with the boxes out there, we, we start bringing them through the line so that we can cut down on the traffic, Chief Gunch. Yeah, I believe the very first one, you know, you live and learn. But we had them going out-
We figured it out pretty quick.
Bunyan Drive. And I think they were, they were parking over in your parking lot there at the municipal center. So, we got everything coming out of Center Street. Much better now. Much better now. But yeah, they are finding out. Those are some other things that I've jotted down, though, as ways that we can continue to advertise that. And, you know, we'll continue to monitor the needs. And if we need to expand, we can expand that, too.
Council topics?
Are we up on our agenda? I just had a comment. I guess are we going to our topic? Shared development. We all sort of know where we're at with that. We ran, everybody, we all ran into a couple walls. And I think we're going to need a little more time. You guys need time. We need time. I don't think everybody has a complete, a complete understanding of, of what we can do together. I know us working together. I know everybody understands us working together. It works very well for everyone. But there's financial questions for both sides. And I think that's something we all need to look into and, and to look into deeper into what's coming your way already and what could be coming your way in the future, to put it simply, as far as a financial partnership and that kind of thing. I think we all have a lot to learn, me including, you know, me included. I won't bring up the word. We all know what the word is. But yeah, I think if we, if we could spend a little time digging into what we have been talking about over the past few months, and it's in everybody's head and might, maybe everyone thinks maybe that's why we are here tonight, I guess I could say it a tiff. And let's all do a little, let's educate ourselves. If you guys need anything from us, let's, let's, let's give it to each other and see how, see how that works out. And then we can maybe get together again and talk. It's a tough subject for us and you. We don't want to do anything to you and you don't want to do anything to us. We really want, we really want to work together with you guys for the betterment of the school and, and, and the city. I just think us not working together, and we all know how that's not a good thing. I think it's been way too far and too long, you know, since we've gotten together. I love face-to-face. I don't like emails and Zoom and all this other stuff. I think it's fantastic we're all here today. And I really appreciate everybody showing up and discussing things because we all care. In the end, we all care. And that's, that's all I have to say about that. Appreciate it.
I mean, to echo Matt's comments, years ago, it was a lot simpler. You really needed a property owner. You needed a developer, whether that was a property owner or, you know, separate, and you needed a city. And most of the time, we can make it work. And as you all know, in the last, call it four years, three, four years, you know, a lot of things have changed. And we're facing a lot of uphill obstacles that a lot of time we could take care of ourselves. But there are certain things, we all know the one that we've been dealing with, well, since 2017, the Uptown Project, and trying to get that off the ground. And, you know, we haven't know what's going on with the mall area. And once again, you need the developer, you need the property owner, which we now have a good one at Sears. But everything hinges on what's going on with Sears. It's amazing. We're going to ICSC, what, May 18th? May 18th? That's where we go out each year to Las Vegas where we usually have, Kevin and we have about two dozen meetings, about two dozen meetings with different companies. And we've had a lot of success because it's a, everyone's right there. You know, Trader Joe's came from there. You know, it took over 10 years for Trader Joe's to come. And once again, property owner, developer, you know, who's going to, who's going to get the job done. But as we all talked about today and we've talked about in the past, Mr. Wade and I, you know, we've had several conversations. His board is passionate. We're both extremely passionate, you know, about the school district and the city of Manner. And it's all about what Matt said, is working together. Because we're trying to get done what we need to get done. As you know, just by the one project, it's been years in the making. And every time we think that we have it, we're rounding third, sliding into home, something happens. But I know we could do it together. We're all good people. You know, we all care about the community, care about the kids. And to have a good community, as Matt echoed, you have to have police, you have to have fire, you have to have schools, you have to have good roads, you have to have fitness centers, you have to have ice skating rinks. You have, what's great is the amphitheater, you know, how it brings the community together. So, that's why I look forward to future meetings. And definitely, we should have one, one of the Tuesdays for the amphitheater. Okay, before the meeting, let's get together socially and give you a-
Ante, will give them the good tour?
We'll give you the good tour.
You know, the amphitheater is so successful, we had to move our meetings.
Oh, I heard. I'm sorry about that.
Sorry, sorry, counsel.
Because we were in so much high energy and happiness, we couldn't hear.
They weren't really just rocking out. It was fun.
It is amazing.
And there would be no parking.
There's no parking.
The people come from Mansfield for these bands. And then last year, Queen Band, they're playing again today. They're from California. And I was talking to them before and the weather was horrible. And they're like, we're worried about the weather. We're not going to have anyone show up. I go, you're going to have someone show up. He goes, well, we're from California. We'd have 150 people here if the weather was like this. He goes, what do you think you're going to have? I go, about 5, 6,000. He's like, no way. Sure enough, there's what, so 5, 6,000, if not more there. That's one of our favorite bands. But it's just amazing how it brings the community together. I mean, you see people from all parts. And I've talked to people far away from Mansfield, Erie, outside of Pittsburgh, someplace outside of Pittsburgh, you know, so they come from-
Detroit.
They drive in on a Tuesday, yeah. You know, they're driving out here on a Tuesday. A lot of times, they stay overnight. So, once again, it adds to our community. They got to eat somewhere. They got to sleep somewhere, you know, things of that nature. So, it's a great event. But it shows what Manner's all about. It really does. Maggie, if we invite you all, do you have to have an executive session?
To the amphitheater?
Maybe.
I'll, I'll wait for that.
Think about that.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Anything else?
Mr. President, just, just a couple of comments on, on that amphitheater. By the way, we'll make sure you all have free tickets to all the shows.
They're all free.
Because it's free. But it is going to get busy.
Sally is with the budget?
No, I do, I do want to say that, you know, years, many years ago, the city and the schools put an agreement together, which we still honor today, about sharing our facilities for these big events. And that's worked out well, I think, for all of us, for your athletic events and for us and the amphitheater. I mean, really, without the parking. And it will get a little crazy around here starting in June. So, you know, we, we certainly appreciate, you know, your patience on all of that because it will rut up some of the grass and that. But it will be a nice, a nice time. One thing I did want to mention, a last thing just from, from our side, is that we, we are pursuing some grant funding that has become available through Lake Tran for sidewalk extensions. And our first thought on that was to reconsider some of the old safe routes to school pathways that we looked at. And for a while, we're getting some state grants for. That sort of dried up a while back. But I'd be like to reengage with you on that to see that. And I'm guessing that maybe some of those target areas have probably changed since we really last started to look at that. But that might be something that we can get together on here soon because I think they're looking at funding some projects relatively soon.
Maybe that'll help us expand our walk zone so we don't have as many bus route issues. I like it.
Anything else from this side of the portion?
You know what? My impression of this today is, is how much more comfortable we all are together. I think this was extremely beneficial, us getting together like this because now we, we see faces, we, we laugh together and spoke. So, I think that, I think that this meeting should be held like the first week of May every year. Sometimes I know that things are really tough to get everybody together in one room. And you guys have a meeting, we have a meeting. But I think we should prioritize making this a yearly event. And just, even if we have not a whole lot to talk about, but just coming face-to-face and, and proving on this comfort level. Because when we do that, I think we can do our jobs collectively better. So, my thanks.
Agreed.
Agreed. That's a great idea.
All right. Anything else?
That's all I got.
Do I have a motion to adjourn from this side?
Second.
Did you, you want to add something, Mr.?
For tonight, I don't-
Flabbergasted. We're done in 45 minutes.
We're bringing them to every meeting.
We meet every day.
Next Tuesday.
So, counsel, you know, they, they, they go till midnight. We don't, we don't.
You have a motion?
Got to put some rules in there and stop that.
Do we have a motion to adjourn over?
Come on.
We have a second from Mrs. Ebbel.
Thank you, everybody.